Tara, I am trying to get the meeting streamed. I will let you know when I am ready for us to start.
Okay.
Okay, I think we are ready to roll.
Okay, we will start as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand.
It stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no cancellations or tabling, so we will start with application number one, Z 20-019 1199 Sherman Avenue.
Okay, if you can look at your supplemental packet, we did include an updated CPD text and site plan. The difference of this update is that a sidewalk along the western side of Sherman Avenue in SubArea A, as requested by the Department of Public Service, is now included. So having said that, this request was tabled at the August 13th, 2020 Development Commission meeting. The 0.77 acre site consists of five parcels, all zoned in the R3 residential district. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District is comprised of three subareas. SubArea A is developed with the historic Avery Pontiac Building listed on the Columbus Register of Historic Properties. SubArea B is developed with a single unit dwelling, and SubArea C is developed as part of three undeveloped parcels. The requested CPD district will permit the redevelopment of SubArea A into 7,200 square feet of eating and drinking establishment space, including 800 square feet of outdoor dining space, 4,010 square feet of retail space, and 18,363 square feet of general office space, while SubAreas B and C will be redeveloped into a 36 space and 16 space parking lot, respectively. North of the site is a mix of one, two, and four unit dwellings in the R3 residential district. South of the site are single unit dwellings in the R3 residential district. East of the site is a two unit dwelling and undeveloped land in the R3 residential district. And west of the site is a single unit dwelling and a mixed use building in the R3 residential district. The site is within the planning boundaries of the Near East Area Plan, which does not contain a specific land use recommendation for this location, but does provide guidance on the development of new commercial uses within residential areas and encourages the preservation and renovation of historic structures rather than demolition. The plan also states that parking needs should be balanced with the goal of preserving the character of the neighborhood and creating a pedestrian-friendly environment. The site is located within the boundaries of the Near East Area Commission and is subject to review by the Historic Resources Commission, both of which recommended approval. The CPD text establishes use restrictions and supplemental development standards for each subarea that address building and parking setbacks, traffic access and parking, street trees, screening, and lighting controls, and include a commitment to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan. The text includes variances for loading spaces, vision clearance, and building setbacks in SubArea A, parking lot landscaping and building and parking setbacks in SubArea B, and for parking lot shade trees and parking setbacks in SubArea C. Additionally, SubArea A includes the parking variance from 159 required parking spaces to zero provided parking spaces. However, the CPD text clearly states, and is reflected on the submitted site plan, that SubAreas B and C will be parking lots containing 36 and 16 spaces respectively to solely support those uses in SubArea A. A parking study was completed by the applicant and reviewed by the Department of Public Service, where it was determined that parking variance could be supported at this location. The proposed CPD Commercial Plan Development District permits the redevelopment of the historic Avery Pontiac Building into a mixed use development containing eating and drinking establishment, outside dining, retail, and general office uses, and provides 36 space and 16 space parking lots for a total of 52 parking spaces, specifically assigned for those uses in SubArea A. The CPD text establishes appropriate use restrictions and supplemental development standards for each subarea and includes a commitment to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan. Staff supports the requested variances because of the existing building's characteristics and urban setting. The proposal is consistent with the Near East Area Plan's guidelines that historic properties be preserved and renovated, and parking needs should be balanced with the goal of preserving the character of the neighborhood and creating a pedestrian-friendly environment, and therefore, City Department's recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Okay, traffic issues?
All traffic items have been adequately addressed.
Okay, and recreation and parks?
We have no concerns.
Okay, you have staff approval, area commission approval. And are there any speakers regarding case number one? Okay, that being the case, I need a motion to approve the 9920 updated text and site plan.
So moving.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
We, I'm sorry, for the person who's taking our notes, can you announce who moved and who seconded?
Marty moved.
I seconded, John seconded.
Thank you.
And I, Mike, will call for the roll to be read.
Marty Anderson.
Uh, yes.
Maria Conroy.
Yes.
Amanda Golden.
Yes.
Don Ingersen.
Yes.
And Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes, you are approved. Okay, we will move on to case number two. Z 19-007, 6465 North Hamilton Road.
In your supplemental packet, you can find a revised text and site plan, which addresses some of the conditions in the Rocky Fork Black Lica Court Panel's recommendation. Shannon, should I pull it? Are you gonna pull up the PowerPoint?
Is it not showing?
Um, not for me, but I can, it might be up, it might just not be working on mine.
Let me.
Absolutely on my screen.
It's up.
There we go.
Whoops, let me get to the right slide, sorry guys. There we go.
The site consists of one vacant parcel in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is requesting the CPD Commercial Plan Development District to commit a car wash. The north, south, and east of the site is undeveloped land in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. To the west is the commercial development in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The site is within the boundaries of the Rocky Fork Black Lica Court Plan, which recommends multi-family land uses for this location. The site is located within the boundaries of the Rocky Fork Black Lica Court Panel. His recommendation is for conditional approval. After review of the revised materials, it has been determined that the conditions are met. So with the revised text and plan have been provided to you, the Rocky Fork Black Lica Court Panel's recommendation is for approval. The development text commits to a site plan and includes provisions for setbacks, access, buffering and landscaping, outdoor display areas, and signage commitments. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District will allow a car wash that is compatible with the development standards of adjacent commercial development. While the Rocky Fork Black Lica Court Plan recommends multi-family land uses for this location, TAC recognizes that the existing zoning allows for commercial uses and is therefore supportive of the commercial use of this location. City Department's recommendation is for approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does anyone have a question or comment? Traffic, Dan.
All traffic items have been addressed.
And Kathy?
There are no concerns.
Okay, it's been stated there are two speakers for this application. Tara? And one other speaker?
I don't know. She's muted.
Okay, well, let me, she can hear me though. Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, city council guidelines, speakers can have three minutes each to give us your concerns or your comments. And try not to be redundant. If the first speaker talks about one thing, second speaker shouldn't just repeat that, should go on to a different, a different subject matter, and we will take copious notes and respond with the applicant. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Chris Reinhardt, Mr. Chairman's Chris Reinhardt, Reinhardt Civil Services on behalf of Turkey Hill.
Chris, do you have any comments?
I was just gonna say that I'd be interested to hear what the speakers have to say, and then, you know, perhaps I can address some of their questions, possible concerns, things like that.
All right, we'll come back to you then. Let's hear from Tara first.
Hey Tara, you're still muted. I don't know if there's a, there's a thing on the bottom.
Let me see if I can do it. Okay, she's unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. When you pulled the chart up, it looked like it's directly across from my condo within 256 feet. That's very concerning to me, unless of course, the visual of the building is not, you know, is compliant. I know some car washes almost look like, can make it look like a bank. The other concern is of course noise, and are they going to be compliant with brick and stone that help muffle that noise? And all the mechanical units are housed inside the building. In other words, we won't hear the dryers and the blowers and, because I don't want this to constantly end up in a legal battle with OSHA and me constantly trying to get an attorney because I hear it inside of my condo. I can't enjoy my patio because I hear the constant mechanical devices of the car wash. So those are probably my two main concerns. Lighting is another concern. The LED lighting can be very bright in the back of a car wash, and that can interfere with, of course, enjoying your home. And chemical pollution, that was another concern. So I think those are pretty much the main ones. The noise level, hours of operation. If cars can back up 40 cars, then you've got motors running and of course, the fumes and exhaust from those cars. And we already have noise on Hamilton Road. I really don't want to see something where it's a constant battle because it has really increased the noise level, and the property value goes down because nobody wants to buy your home or your condo across from a car wash. Those are my main concerns.
I have a question Tara. Are you across Hamilton Road from this proposed location?
Yes, yes, directly across the street. I mean, the visual makes it look like it's pretty spacious, but it is not. I could throw a frisbee to where that, where you showed the location.
Okay, all right, let's hear our second speaker. Hear your comments, please. Are we sure he's here?
Um, I can't, I can't tell. I saw his name, you know, block with his name in it, but I.
What's his name?
Joe.
Yeah, Chair, he was signed on earlier unless he logged off and called in. I don't see his name on the participant list anymore.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, let's, let's get back with Chris Reinhardt then. Chris, a question's come up about visual buffering and noise pollution. We need to unmute Chris.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so a little unusual with an online meeting. I don't have the visuals that I would normally have in. Tara, I was just gonna suggest, even after this evening, you know, before it goes to city council for approval, I'd be happy to share the plan documents and things with you to, you know, kind of give you an idea of what it's gonna look like and all that. But I don't know, Shannon, can you pull up the site plan?
Yes. Um, Haley, just real quick, your applicant for Z 19094 is having a hard time getting into the meeting. Are you able to try to email him the invite again?
Yeah, I'm emailing him right now. I sent him the meeting link again. I was just gonna tell him to use the call-in numbers, because I figured that this might be an easier, easier route to go. So I'm gonna send that again. But yeah, he's having some trouble getting through WebEx, so.
Great. Okay, there's the site plan.
Okay, so I don't know if we can blow that up any at all.
Uh, let me see here.
Can you zoom in a little bit?
I can.
That would be great.
Wait, let me go here.
Then Shannon, if you go through to like the slide view too, like the presentation view might be easier.
Okay.
So what we've done is, and again, just a little bit of history on this, on this particular property. This property was zoned originally back in 2003, and it actually contains five or six different parcels, all of which are zoned commercial. I think this particular parcel is zone C4. It's a part of a CPD district, but it has C3 and C4 uses in it, and Turkey Hill's gonna take this parcel and combine it with the one to the north, which is going through a separate BZA process for a host of different reasons, beyond our control. But it will comply as much as possible with the existing zoning, the one to the north, which will have the fuel center and the convenience store structure. But these two parcels will combine to work together. And so Tara, to answer some of your questions, some of the design, the design elements that are required for the northern parcel were actually applying to the car wash on the southern parcel so that they're consistent. So it'll have a pitched roof. I believe the materials are more of the stone facing those kinds of things. But again, I can, I can get that information for you and share it with you. I believe all of the mechanicals will be contained within the structure. And there will be faux windows facing Hamilton Road. So it'll look like there are windows there, but they're not actually real windows. So that'll help kind of muffle some of the sound. There is a requirement for street trees to be planted along Hamilton Road. So I don't know that you can easily see those on the site plan, but there's, you know, one, two, three, four, five that are, looks like they've located within the car wash area in between the car wash and Hamilton Road. And then in addition to that, there's a row of plantings that go along the building itself. And I think those are typically like boxwood type things. And then those extend along the exit point on the northern part of the car wash. If you can see that, it's, it's right beside the tree. There's a line of, looks like boxwood type plantings in a line there. And then at the request of the panel, when we presented this to them, they asked us to extend those plantings on the southern portion. So you can see where the entryway is for the car wash that runs along the western border around the southern part and then into the building. There's a line of plantings that starts just before the entrance and then curves around and runs along the border again to try to cut down on any light escape, things like that. They also did, there was concerns raised about the noise associated with vacuums and things like that. That was part of the reason they wanted to locate the parking spaces that have the vacuums on the interior of the site. So it wasn't as close to Hamilton Road. And then with respect to hours of operation, I know that question came up. The planned hours are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So it's trying to keep it during what would typically be regular business hours for most commercial type businesses. But certainly, you know, I don't know that's 100% set in stone, and if it becomes an issue, you know, I'm sure Turkey Hill would be willing to discuss that or, you know, anything else that they could try to minimize the noise. Think what else, what else, what else you were asking that I may not have addressed as of yet?
Well, the city's maximum level of decimals, is it gonna fall within 40 or?
I don't have an exact decimal level, but certainly they'd have to comply with that ordinance. So I mean, it's, it's not something that, you know, I'm telling you that they're, you know, they're not gonna comply with because they'd be required to, so.
Shannon, can you put up the aerial photograph on this?
Sure.
And Shannon, while you're pulling it up, I see that Joe is back in the call. I'm not sure.
Yeah, there you go. The geometry here looks like the closest condo is, is going to be shielded by the southeast wall of that car wash from, from noise escape. The exit door is considerably further north from the green grass and the fourplex condos that I'm looking at so far.
Yeah, and when they designed the site, that's what they tried to do was to put that building kind of in between those residential structures so that, you know, the, the main focus of activity would be on the other side of that building.
Okay. So can I ask you a question? So then is it going to be closer to the double barrel end opposed to time past, which is on the south, or is it gonna be farther down south? I guess when I look at that site, it looks pretty large.
It'll be on the southern, it'll be on the southeast corner. So that's where the structure will be. But in terms, yeah, so, so it will be the, it will be, the building itself will be the closest to the condo structure, but the backside of that building is what's gonna face you. So the cars will be coming in on the, on the very south side, and it's hard for me because I can't point, but, and then they'll be coming out on the north side. That'll, that'll go along the border type, but you've got that buffer area that has all those trees. So I'm not sure that you're gonna see it a whole lot anyway. And then if you wanna use the vacuum, they have to actually come back into the site. So it'd be driving away from you to go back into the site to circulate back around to, if they wanna use the vacuum, they'd have to come back around, park in a space, and then use the vacuum there. And then to exit the site, they either have to, there's, in conformance with discussions with the city, there's a right in, right out that's right there. That's kind of in between the two sites, and that is on Hamilton Road. So there will only be traffic that is heading south that will be able to access the site from Hamilton Road, at least at that site. Further down, further down, there's a, there's a drive. I think that actually you can sneak your way back up into the site.
Yes.
But the principal access point is gonna be this right in, right out on Hamilton, and then this reconfigured access point on water.
Now, one question too, when you were talking about the tree line and the box bushes, did you say that there was going to be a fence or some kind of wall?
There's no fence.
Okay.
It's just the, it's the combination of the two, the trees along with the boxwoods. So you're gonna have the box, you're gonna have the building itself as part of the, of the sound barrier. Then you're gonna have a row of boxwoods, and that, that will help with sound, but it also help with light. And then you're gonna have the, the trees that are gonna be intermingled in there, which will also help, you know, give some, some shading for the site, site lines, as well as probably helping with reducing sound.
Okay, so my understanding is with the building, stone or masonry, they can, they do have a method to really soundproof that. You know, the highest quality and you can't really do a good job soundproofing.
And again, I don't wanna commit to that because I don't recall off the top of my head the material that they have
Okay.
allocated for that site. But that's, again, that's something that we can talk about offline after tonight. Certainly happy to talk to you about that.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Most of the ones I've seen have concrete block walls for water treatment as much as for sound.
Yes.
Yeah, all the mechanicals are in that slender strip that's between the actual wash bay and the south wall. So you've got a compartmentalized sound area inside the building, and then you've got masonry. And two layers of masonry as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and as far as the lighting, I know you'd asked about that. They do, and it's probably something I can share with you too. They do a photometric plan when, it's called a photometric plan. I'm not sure if you've ever heard of that, but what that plan shows is kind of what the spill off of light would be for the fixtures that are on the site. And, and almost routinely, they use down lighting to minimize any off-site exposure so that, you know, there is little to no off-site exposure for the lighting. So I'm happy to share, share that with you as well offline.
Okay, yes, that would be, because that is one of the complaints I've been hearing through my legal team, is they're saying lighting, that people can't even open their blinds in the evening because the lights are so bright shining in there.
Yeah.
So I guess those were the main concerns, lighting, noise.
And I was just gonna say, again, I think, you know, their hours of operation is only intended to go to approximately 9:00 p.m. So at least with the car wash, so at least for those purposes, they may be able to do things with the lighting as well too, so.
Okay.
Could I get your contact information or I can give you my email?
Chris and Tara, I have both of your contact information, so I can email both of you.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, we, we need a, unless somebody has any comments or questions, we need a motion and your name, and a second, and your name. And we would like to put today's, or 9920 again for the date of the revised text and revised site plan. Who moves?
Second by Maria. Motion by John?
Maria gets the second. She was running the draw than I was.
All right, all those in favor, say. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, please call a roll.
Maria Conroy. Amanda Golden.
Yes.
Don Ingersen.
Yes.
Marty Anderson.
Yes.
And Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes, they are approved.
Great. Thanks, everyone. And Tara, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, case number three, Z nineteen, day zero, ninety-four, thirty-six, seventy, Tradeview Road.
The zero point six, six, seven acre site consists of one parcel developed with a car wash facility in the LC five limited commercial district. This property is the subject of recent code enforcement action for converting the site to a car sales facility without obtaining a certificate of zoning clearance. The applicant proposes the C four commercial district to legitimize the car sales facility use on the site. North of the site is undeveloped land zoned in the C four commercial district and a multi-unit residential development zoned in the A R L B apartment residential district. South of the site across Tribune Road is an auto repair facility in the C four commercial district and an office and single unit dwelling in Franklin Township. East of the site is a commercial strip center in the C four commercial district. West of the site across Mapleway Drive is an office building in the C two commercial district. The site is within the boundaries of the Tradeview Roberts area plan, which recommends neighborhood commercial uses at this location. The site is located within the boundaries of the West Toyota area commission. This recommendation is included in your supplemental packet and the recommendation is for disapproval. The Columbus multimodal thoroughfare plan identifies this portion of Tradeview Road as a suburban commuter corridor with one hundred and twenty feet of right of way. The proposed C four commercial district would secure proper zoning to legitimize the car sales facility use on the site. The Tradeview Roberts area plan recommends neighborhood commercial land uses at this location, which envisions smaller scale commercial uses that are built to urban commercial overlay design standards. Additionally, this parcel is located within the Santa Margarita subarea of the plan, which discourages vehicle sales uses in order to preserve the neighborhood focus of the area. Therefore, staff does not support the request as it is incompatible with the recommendations of the plan and staff is recommending disapproval. I'm available for any questions.
I have a question. What is the overlay requirement for setback planting? And does the site with its paving as it exists conform or not?
Haley, what overlay is this?
It's not within an overlay. The plan just recommends that it's these, that it's built to urban overlay standards.
Okay, so John, to answer your question, the urban commercial overlay would require a maximum ten foot setback with parking to the side of or behind the principal building.
So no parking in front, but they could have the display area for the automobiles within ten feet of the right of way?
Well, if, if it was a redevelopment, the building would have to be in the front and the display area would be behind the building as well as any customer parking.
So no display of used cars for sale in front of the building? If this zoning goes, if, if, if what we're talking about is approved?
No, because it's not in an overlay. And so it's, the reason why staff is recommending disapproval is because the site is not designed in accordance with the recommended overlay that's within the Tradeview Roberts plan. So it's, it's kind of confusing. There is no overlay on Tradeview Road. So by code, they would not have to. If this was zoned properly, they would not have to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question or a comment? Are there any speakers here to weigh in on this application?
Yes, this is Jeff Glaven. I was the applicant for the rezoning.
Okay, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, I am. Sure, I am the applicant representing Flori Company.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the netherworld that would like to speak tonight regarding this application, a neighbor or interested citizen?
Chair Fitzpatrick, can we ask Daniel and Kathy about their input?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, I want to get people organized if they're going to speak. So we'll come back to that. Dan, traffic issues here?
So there is a right of way dedication requirement associated with this application, which could have some impacts on the lighting for that parking lot and potentially the area of the parking closest to Tradeview Road. Also, we've asked for more information on the shared drive on the north side of the site. We just want to make sure that everything is properly recorded at the Franklin County Recorder's Office to make sure there's not any future problems since that drive would serve other properties outside this location.
And.
If I can.
Yes.
If I could comment, I mean, we're, yeah, we're not making any changes or alterations or corrections or anything to the existing access to the site. It's going to stay as is.
Can I get the number six's name again, please, in spelling?
Oh, yeah. My, my name?
Yes, please. It just says call in user six. I don't have your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it's Jeff and it's Glaven, G L A V, is it Victor, A N?
Thank you.
I, I have a question for the staff. Why is this a rezoning and not a, a variance request? Is this, is that their only resort?
The zoning is C five commercial district, which doesn't allow the auto sales use. And it, we always encourage rezoning if, if there is a zoning district for the use of the property that they are requesting. The C four district also allows a lot, many more commercial uses than what the C five district allows. So I think in the applicant's best interest, they're looking at other future uses that this could possibly be.
All right.
Mike, I've got a question. Is Dave Paul going to speak to this one or not?
No, Dave Paul's just listening. Brian Endicott from the West Toyota area commission is with us as well as Kristen, I think.
Yes, Krista McKinley, I'm here.
Thank you. Yes, I'm just observing tonight. Thank you.
I just, I'll reserve my comments until after we've heard the, the area groups.
All right, let, let's go to the area group at this time and have them give their comments, please.
Krista, why don't you go first?
Okay, I will, Brian. Thank you. My name is Krista McKinley. I'm the chair of the West Toyota area commission. This applicant presented to the full West Toyota area commission on May twenty first, twenty twenty. At that time, there were a lot of questions from all area commissioners as well as residents from neighboring developments about the applicant's intended use and maintenance and plans for the property. Everyone in attendance was clear that the current area plan specifically excludes car sales for this area. And additionally, the applicant did admit that he holds a car sales and cars leasing license from the Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles. Those are two separate licenses. That elicited a lot of questions about buy here, pay here car sales. The majority of the area commissions and the commissioners in the West Toyota area commission were against any sort of buy here, pay here car sales, which would include onsite car leasing, which applicant indicated that he would be doing. Residents who had attended the zoning committee meetings had expressed dissatisfaction with the current number and conditions of the vehicles that were currently and had been for some time on this property. And then lastly, when the applicant presented to the West Toyota area zoning committee and the full area commission, they represented that they would improve the property by adding landscaping as well as some minor improvements to the building that is situated on the property and not conduct buy here, pay here sales. It's my understanding that the current application contains no exclusion for buy here, pay here type of sales or for any landscaping or other improvements. For all of these reasons, the West Toyota area commission urges the development commission to deny this application.
Okay. Let's hear from our other speaker and then we'll talk.
Good evening. My name is Brian Endicott. Many of you may recognize me as Austin commissioner and the zoning chair for the West Toyota area commission. But tonight I'm wearing my other hat. I'm just a community resident tonight. The opinions I share tonight should not be, should be, should be considered as only my own personal opinions and absolutely not inferred as the position of the commission. That stretch of Tradeview Road is in desperate need of some TLC. This parcel and many other parcels are either abandoned or in desperate need of redevelopment. This particular occasion, which has already been noted, has been an abandoned car wash for as long as I can remember. It is a major eyesore to the area. As Krista mentioned, the Tradeview Roberts plan does not recommend this rezoning requested. The rezoning to auto sales certainly is not the best outcome for this land, but it would be a dramatic improvement from the vacated car washes officially there now. I've had prior discussions with this applicant and they've been willing to adopt some of the measures that have been mentioned, such as prohibiting buy here, pay here styro sales. While something on this site might be preferred, this improvement is definitely an improvement over the eyesore that currently exists. It's been abandoned for so long, it's been abandoned for so long that another application for a more suitable use of this land is not in the foreseeable future. I'd ask the development commission and, and the applicant and the area commission to try to work together to come up with something that might be mutually agreeable so we can get rid of what's currently there and hopefully make this a better site with this, with this new order. Thank you.
All right, I, I, I hear what you're saying and this is pretty much what John Ingersen was saying. I think this is a, a classic case where we would do everyone involved a service by tabling this application. So more work can be done, more details can be added. There's a lot of loose questions and there are serious questions about many of the, the, the buy here, pay here, it's not put down in writing and, and it needs to be put down in writing, not just verbal slap. So I would, I would recommend a consideration that we table this and, and everybody work together and come up with a more comprehensive and more well documented and detailed plan. Anyone else on the commission feel the same way?
I, I want to weigh in, but Maria, if you want to say something, go. This, this is my take. If, if you don't have an overlay in place and, you know, this corridor is going to continue to be hot for the foreseeable future, there's a lot of development going on around Santa Margarita. But if you allow the grandfathering of used car sales on this site, you're never going to be able to pull them back into some sort of conformity with your, your overlay. You know, all you have to do is drive down South High Street. Any new auto sales, you know, because of the overlay have to be twenty-five feet back from the right of way line. But when you drive down that street, they're right up against parking blocks against the sidewalk with balloons and streamers. They comply with the zoning. They will never have to not comply if they continue the use of auto sales. So this is one of those deals where you've got to be really careful of what you're allowing to have happen. And just the lack of detail in this particular application is a little bit disturbing and the fact that it's a, that it's a drive through car wash, which I realize puts some problems there that, that I think we just ought to hold our cards a bit until we see what, you know, we see what happens with, with the updating of the overlay there.
All right, I think, Maria, do you have any comments?
No, well, not more than what John had said. It, it was kind of looking at the, the overall aerial of that. You can see some remnants there, but the, the transition, it, it, I can see where this is just not as, as written in a, in a, it, it, it's going to keep kind of a bad precedent, it would be the concern. So that's, as it's written now, I, I, I'm not sure that there's, there's a way around it, but the, 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 there are some, they have the garage there. You have a tire sales there, you know, kind of kitty corner. But then the rest of it is kind of evolved into something different, which is what you don't want to slide. It'd be a slippery slope. And as John said, I think it would, it wouldn't go away at that point.
All right. And Marty, do you have anything you would like to mention?
I was just going to ask if there's even any overlay in the, you know, in the near future. Is there any overlay in the, in the plans? Are we talking about being worried about something that, you know, isn't coming along? And I'm never for approving a, a non-conforming use, you know, by changing zoning, if that's the only benefit to be had. So Shannon, I may not be asking the question artfully about whether or not there's an overlay in our future here.
Not that I'm aware of. The recommendations are in many of the area plans throughout the city and, and it is a planning division initiative. I don't think they have anything in the works right now, but that, that's not to say that within the next five years or so that they might not try to start establishing some overlays on these corridors. And we're also undergoing a zoning code assessment in, that will probably start in the next month or so. And that might be, we might have to wait and see what happens with that before we start establishing overlays on parts of the city that don't have them right now.
Okay, thank you.
As I see it, there's at least two negative votes coming, maybe more. If it's voted in its current status, so if this thing's going to have any further hope of survival, we need to table it and let some people do some homework and come and see us again.
Is there an opportunity for me to comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. One of the things that we, we want to address with this is that that the current tenant that was on the property, yeah, is the car wash. Between the vandalism and everything else that was going on, you know, the property just, you know, became distressed, closed up and just kind of left. And I, I'm the architect working with the ownership of the property. And when we come back, you know, we, we, we do have an opportunity, you know, with the owner to basically put car sales in there. And it's just for a limited, you know, period of time. The property under the current planning that's proposed for that area, the property has much more value than what a, a car wash or even a car sales will have for it. What we were hoping to do was to repurpose the property in, you know, just for the immediate period of time here. And we had even offered up at one point in time to, even if there wouldn't be a timeframe on it where the zoning would only last for, you know, a period of time, we would be open to that as well. When we met in the very beginning back in February on this with the, you know, with the committee for the zoning and everything, they tabled our first meeting because the issues of landscaping and approving the property came up. And they asked and requested a landscaping plan, which we had provided to you. The planning division then came back and asked us to put more information in that plan to better define it. And so that's what we did with the current landscape plan that you should have in front of you. And what we were trying to do was nothing more than upgrade the present. And what we were trying to do was nothing more than upgrade the presence of that property, not for the, you know, the long term, but for the shorter term. So there was a willingness, willingness on our part basically to work with the city to improve it through landscaping, improvements to the building, comply with the signage with where and what it needs to say, and also the actual use of the property with being car sales only. It's not going to be the least opportunity there. So our hopes were that we could be, I don't want to say in somewhat, you know, a catalyst for the improvement in the area. But what we were also getting challenged with is with the, you know, the Traboo Garage across the street on the southeast corner and then on the southwest corner with round tire sales. Pretty much like Brian had met, the area is just pretty distressed right now. Our thinking was that if we could come in and just repurpose the property for whatever time period, we don't see this as a long-term solution for that property, but more for the short term. And that was pretty much where the direction of where, what we were trying to do in coming in for this rezoning application. And our willingness is to work basically, you know, with the plan department, with the city to do whatever. I mean, if the setback costs increase, we'll work with that. There's no, there's nothing that we're going to do to impact the traffic. Matter of fact, our car sales will be like minimal as far as traffic goes. But as far as the access points and everything else, we won't be doing any changes or alterations to traffic. As far as utilities go, obviously there's not going to be any major infrastructure that needs to be changed at it or whatever to the property. But our hopes are down the road that as the, as that area develops, we know the property is going to be a part of it and, you know, at that point in time, you know, it'll obviously move to a much better use. But we were only looking and hoping that as the more we talked about this, that improving the property, adding the landscaping, doing a better job with the signage, you know, improving the, that it would help, you know, maybe even serve as a little bit of a catalyst for what was going on, especially with our neighbors across the street. So any rate, that's pretty much where we are. If there was something that the city wants to come back and say, you know what, we'll grant you temporary zoning or we'd be open to anything. We just want to repurpose the property. We want to clean it up. Some of the vehicles that are on there, we don't even know where some of those are coming from. And it's one of those things that, you know, we've got the challenges and just, you know, having to tow those away and it's just, so we want to get the site in a position where it fits, blends better in for now, but we don't see that as a solution for the long term. So we just want to make that, that you understand where we are now, but it's not where we're going to be tomorrow, if that makes sense.
Jessica, Mike Fitzpatrick, I feel for you and I've been in the same place, sitting on the other side of the table before. But we can't, as Marty stated, we can't really go forward with a positive vote here unless we either have very definite hardline data or you have an enhanced plan. But to take the old car wash and, and put lipstick on it doesn't make it something that contributes to the neighborhood, which is, I think, going to be increasing dramatically. So it would make more sense to come back in later with a definite plan to put a more fitting use or, or take what you've got. We don't like the idea of giving somebody a temporary okay to do something for a little while with the hope that it will change into something better later. Because I think all the, all the neighbors and the people in the Traboo Road area expect something better now. And that's why the staff was against it. That's why the, the Area Commission was against it. So the opening is if you, if you table this now and go back to the drawing board and see if you can work out a temporary fix that looks suitable and has definition, then we can hear that and act accordingly. But right now, it's, it's very vague and unmanageable at this present time. So it's up to you. If you want us to vote on it, we can vote on it right now. Or we can, we can table it and let some more information find its way to the paper and then look at it later.
Okay, I would opt, I would opt for us to table it. I think that we are willing to work, you know, pretty much with staff and whatever we need to do. I totally agree with your comment about lipstick on a pig. I think we can probably work and come to some, you know, better definition, something more defined that we can present to you at the next meeting.
And let the record show that that pig is not the creation of Jeff Glavine Architect. It was somebody else's pig.
I so much appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to table in a second and your names to go with it.
Marty, so moved.
Second? Somebody?
I'll second, but I want to make a comment. I think you're going to need to get the Area Commission's approval. And I think you're going to need to get staff's approval to change, to have me consider changing my current position. I will second and hope that you're able to accomplish that.
And it doesn't necessarily have to happen within 30 days, but you're right. It has to be cohesive and there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen. So a point well taken from John. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this case until the next reasonable session. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, this is tabled until you get to where you want to formulate a hardline plan. And we will conclude this meeting at this time. Thanks, thanks for coming to the session.
Thanks, everybody. See you next month.
Dave, we love looking at your picture. Is that your trucker's license picture?
That permanent smile.
The baby.
Yeah.
The baby is the high point.